Councilwoman Mazur.
Yeah.
Council President Cook.
Yeah. Please rise for the salute to the flag and if we do not salute, please remember those on September 11th of 2001 and all those that are overseas trying to keep this country free. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Mayor, you want to read something about September? Oh, I'm sorry, I have one more thing to do.
Open.
Adequate notice for this meeting has been sent to all council members by police messenger on September 7th, 2002, and to all legal newspapers in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 PL 1975. Mayor.
Thank you, Council President. This is a proclamation in remembrance of 9/11. That reads, "Saddlebrook remembers, whereas the unprovoked attacks of September 11, 2001, upon America by foreign terrorists have thrust the United States and other countries into a war it never envisioned militarily or diplomatically, and whereas America is fully committed to ensure our freedoms remain for all generations, and whereas world's opinion needs to remain focused upon the eradication of these inhuman acts perpetrated around the globe, and whereas one way to accomplish this is to never forget that those innocent victims did not die in vain, and whereas America can fight back by reminding the world that the deaths of those people will always be remembered and they will be forever loved, and whereas this can be accomplished through an annual service. Now therefore be it resolved, this commemoration shall be held each September 11th promoting peace and goodwill and encourage patriotism and love of our country. I ask that each resident remember those men, women, and children who lost their lives with eternal respect and pray that fond memories of their loved ones may bring a speedy relief to their families, given under my hand and seal this 12th day of September in the year of our Lord 2002." Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Before we go into our meeting, we're going to have some presentations. Ben DeFranco of Unico would like to make a presentation to the mayor.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Ben DeFranco and tonight I'm representing Saddlebrook Unico. As most everyone knows, last month there was a classic car show held at Saddlebrook High School. It was a great success and Saddlebrook Unico did sponsor a concession stand and tonight I'm here to present the mayor and council a check in the amount of $400 to be used for the Saddlebrook Community Youth Center. Thank you.
I would like to thank the Saddlebrook Unico and Ben DeFranco. It was a huge success. It was the fourth one we had and we raised over $6,000 going to the children. Very hot day, but Unico was out there even hotter still with the hot dogs. Thank you. We love you dearly.
Thanks.
Anybody else who'd like to make a presentation? Mr. Wright?
Sure. We're here to honor these girls tonight for their softball private issue, which I will get into in a minute, but before I do that, I have to thank a couple of people. Probably one in particular is Gloria Cinski. Probably no one in this room probably even knows who she is and I think Pete can witness this as a fact that through the years, I've come at last moment with things that I needed Gloria done or the kids wouldn't be able to play on time or whatever. And she's had to go to war with some of these people to make sure that the job gets done. So she should definitely be recognized very well. She does it for the kids. She doesn't do it for me, believe me. But she's a great person and she's been involved with REC for many years and I've never heard anyone mention her and she's there for the kids and I just want everyone to know that and she's a very fine person. Another people I want to kind of thank, like past town councils and I want to thank Karen for all the help through the years to softball and for other various REC programs. We haven't needed as much the last year or two because our program is built the way it was, but I remember years back when we had to fight for everything we got, Karen and the people up there were always behind us and I hope it stays that way. This is your reward right here, what I'm about to tell you, what these girls accomplished tonight. I'm also going to tell you that if you noticed, the high schools won a couple of state championships. They win their league every year, county. This is where it comes from. It doesn't come from when they get to high school, the high school does something. The people up here, the coaches in our programs and the youth programs, they're the ones that do it and they can't do it without you guys. So just, you know, you all deserve, you're all part of this. Okay? Before I go on any more about the girls, I do have to, I forgot to introduce my coach with me, Brian Brooks. Now about the girls. We did something different in traveling softball this year that's never been done in this town. I've coached for nine years, pretty good on sport, at least I think I am. I don't know, but you have to ask other people. We played a 54 game schedule. That's how many games we played. Basically only had nine in 10 most of the time. Most towns play 16 games, 21, 22 games. I took these girls all over the state. If you just stay in Bergen County, you're not going to see good softball because they don't play it here. We go out to Morris County, we went to East Brunswick, which I will get into in a few minutes. These girls in seven days played 17 games. They take the sport serious. It's not, it's fast pitch, they run, they slide, they take people out, they gave me 110% every time. And then they got to do that or they won't be on my team because that's what I expect from them, but I give in return, same for them and they know that. But that's why they were successful. We don't talk about winning. We talk about being successful and the W's will always take care of themselves. 17 games in seven days is a season for most towns. We only had in those games nine or 10 players at the most. We had a couple of girls get hurt, girls gone on vacation, so we're always down. To give you an example, you play three games on Saturday, three on Sunday if you lose, but since we were a good team, we always played three. Come home, play Monday through Thursday, play three on Saturday, rained out Friday, thank God, and had to play four on Sunday. So that's 17 games in that sort of a time period from East Brunswick to Bergen County. Wasn't just in Saddle. In fact, three games were in Saddle with that in 17. So that just tells you how much time and dedication and practice they put into it. In July, we had two and three off days, July 1st to July 31st. So they're the reason why Saddlebrook High School is good. And this is where it all comes from. To tell us about our season, we did six tournaments. First one with no practice, going to teams out in Kid Tinian. That's where I took the kids. No practice and we showed it the first game, but by the end of the weekend, we saw what we had to see and I think we were 1-3 in that tournament. I think our overall record for the year was 38-15 or 38-16. So when you start out 1-3 and you go 38-15, that's pretty good. They got much better, they improved, but you know, that's usually what I do with a team. I take them out and throw them in where they know nothing and then teach them what they need to know. So from on to there, we went to Rockaway and we did good in that tournament. And then that's two weeks, we gelled. We go to Hanover, we win the tournament, go 6-0 in two days. Just to give you what they're like. Play our overseas and whatever. And then we go down to East Brunswick to play in a 17-team tournament. You know, we made it fun for them. Stayed on a hotel, use a swimming pool, pizza party. No idea I think we could win the tournament and we won the tournament. It was a very, very good weekend. And then we had that schedule I was telling you about and we go to the UGALS tournament that's 21 teams in it and we play on Saturday and we do okay. And then Sunday comes and I say to the kids, and they'll tell you what I said to them right before the game, I said, "You know what? We had a good run. Just go out and have fun today and I don't know what's going to happen." I said, "You know what? We could lose and go home." Now it's 9:00 in the morning when I'm saying this to these kids, just so you know what they go through. And I said, "And it'll still be great, but you know what? There's finals, championship game at 7:30 tonight. Won't surprise me if we're in it." So the first game, we're up, we're down, we win it extra innings and guess what? Win the championship game at 7:30 at night. That's their fourth game of the day with only nine kids. Well, nine kids, pitchers and catchers catch every inning, pitchers pitch and then they have to play the field, they don't rest. So just to give you all an idea of what it is, what these kids really do, it's not showing up, playing a game and going home. So they should all be commended because I've coached a lot of teams and a lot of years and these kids never once said, "It's too hot, it's tired and this summer was record heat." So now I'll introduce the players, we'll bring them up and we've got trophies to give you and pictures. And what I'd like to do with the pictures is though, we'll come back and get their names printed on there. So that picture up there we gave you in 1997 and no one knows who they probably are, the people in that picture.
True.
So we'll start, we'll bring them up, they can stand up here and I'll say what each one position they played. We'll start with Dana Muzell played outfield and second base for us. Dana, stand up.
It's safe with the camera because this is so important to the community. Every word you've said has been recorded. Have each player stand with you so they can be right on that camera as you tell them. If you don't mind me making the suggestion, but I'm proud of it and I know the whole town would be.
Okay. Hey Dana, smile to the camera. Courtney Weiss, Courtney Weiss played centerfield and left field for us. Lisa Vandevia, probably the most pettiest kid I ever know. Lisa played second base, third base and Lisa's one of the three kids the whole year that never missed a practice or a game. Congratulations. Next one is Amanda Brooks. Amanda Brooks, our shortstop, I tell you dedicated Amanda, she fractured her hip in May, by July 5th she was playing again for us at 100%. A special hip. Sarah Stewart, Sarah played every infield position, second, short and third, wherever we needed her. Right? Congratulations, good job. Stephanie Wright, pitcher, outfielder, she did a good job. Congratulations. The next girl, Amanda Bartel. What do I say about Amanda? I think everyone will know about Amanda before they leave this town. Our catcher, she played three first base. Next one's Jen Canastrino. Jen, we played mostly in right field, played other outfield positions, got a lot of assists from right field throwing out on bases, right field getting the first base swing out. Great job. And our next one is Lisa Prevedell. Lisa was the other pitcher and outfield too, had a fantastic year and she did a great job. Another one, girl never missed a practice or a game, Lisa Prevedell, Lisa Vandevia and Stephanie Wright. And they practiced a lot, so it's not like, you know, they're very dedicated and they deserve some kind of attention for that. I thank the girls, great year and now everyone knows. Okay? Thank you. Oh, the trophies, that would be nice. We should take a picture. This is East Brunswick trophy, by the way.
Wow.
It's a little big, it was a big 20. So what else we got? Amanda, bring up the trophy. Believe it or not, you'll laugh at this one.
He's buying them up here.
This is the first place trophy from Hanover. Right? Stephanie? This is the second place trophy, I'm actually cleaning out my house, I don't want to. Second place trophy from UGALS and Sarah Stewart has a picture. This is the team picture for Hanover, it was a very nice picture. Where's the other team picture? Jen Canastrino. East Brunswick one is nice, it's American flag in the background for everyone to see with their trophies, their individual trophies and they gave us that big one. So there's everything and there were several colors, blue and gold, and they did a great job. Oh, thank you.
Well, I know what Jimmy goes through and I know what the other coaches do. Jimmy's a neighbor of mine and if I see him once every three months, it's a lot. I see the car pull into the driveway and I see it goes into the house for one second and then he's gone for the rest of the evening. He's always had the kids at heart and he's always been there for them at number one. Jim, I'd like to ask one question. Your youngest is in cheerleading, are you going to get involved in cheerleading?
No. Thank God.
Thank you very much, Jim.
John, if I may say, Saddlebrook being the great community, it is. Years ago until this day, it was our bandstand who was Mr. Baseball. Well, I think Jimmy Wright is Miss Girls Softball or Mr. Girls Softball. Excuse me, Jim. But you know, this is totally on TV.
I'll have to have them come back for another remark. Anyway, it goes to show you that recreation is so vital to this community, so very vital. And I think the reason being is that we have the support of the parents. You certainly always have had the support of the governing body, but I think most important, what it does for our youngsters, besides teaching leadership and teamwork, it keeps them away from drugs. And you know what? That's the battle, the real battle that's out there as a parent that you're afraid of. And you girls, I commend you. I really commend you because girls have come a long way in the sports activities and you're the leaders, particularly when you can go out and play four games in a day and then come back with a trophy like this. You have so much more to be proud of than you really realize. Don't let it stop here. May it always be a base and a foundation for your future. And thank you to all the coaches in Saddlebrook, within recreation, to all the parents. Thank you.
Are there any other presentations?
Yes. My name is Jeannie Johnson and I'd like to present an artwork that I did relating to 9/11 to the township of Saddle.
I know this isn't going to go far, but to the town council for your vision.
Beautiful.
And I'd like to give a little background on Jeannie. Jeannie is more or less like one of the coaches. She's new to a new program in Saddlebrook within the past four years, the Council of the Arts. And she along with a few other great volunteer individuals have talent that's out there and what they've achieved by coming together under our recreation realm has been taking time out to teach children as well as other age groups, right into the seniors. And Jimmy had done this last year. I think those people that are artistically inclined have a way of expressing themselves in a time of emotional state. She had brought this into me and this year she's had it reproduced. And this will be hung in the town hall for perpetuity. But I'd also, for those who were not at the candlelight vigil that was a little windblown last night, we have a gentleman here in the audience, John Otina, who wrote his song, Torture Freedom. And he and Jeannie came together and last night at the vigil, she had that portrayal there also. The Torture Freedom was written by Mr. John Otina, lifelong resident, and it started out with a story about a lady and the lady was crying as the towers were going down and the tears were coming and in spite of watching what she was seeing before her eyes, she still had the courage and as she's still watching, there was a rise going above her and those were the people's souls going up to heaven. And when she captured, carrying the torches of freedom, thank you, when she captured that. So I would like to know, Jeannie, if we could possibly, or where that photo could be hung publicly for the public to enjoy?
I donated that to John last night.
John?
Yes.
Could we possibly have it here, maybe send it around town to the town hall for a while, the senior center, to the Saddlebrook Library? And then I know the Art Council is having a show in October at Columbia Bank. So during that month, we can hope, John, that, and September 22nd at the lot, no, September 22nd's reopening, but...
October 26th is the reception for the art council.
October 26th. So anyone interested, please stop by and see the beauty of the work and the talent of our residents. Jeannie, thank you very much.
I need a motion taken.
Take a motion open to the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody wishing to speak? Mayor?
My name is Nancy DePalma, 588 Pine Avenue. I have two items I would like to bring up here. At the Board of Education meeting, it was announced that if the town council secured funding, they would reclaim the baseball field at the high school and make it usable. And we were told that the funding was secured and you were going to go ahead with reclaiming that baseball field. What a lot of us parents were wondering is if you can, if lighting is included or if it can be included, if there are funds there because it would drastically enhance the programs because in the spring, you have baseball season that starts quite early and the kids can't practice. And it would also assist in the recreation department for football practices that can't be held there when it gets dark too early. So if there is enough money, we would really appreciate seeing if lighting can be included.
That grant that we have, and I'm not too sure what the amount is, but it's $300,000?
Yeah, over $300,000.
Okay. In my personal opinion, that entire grant money should be forwarded right to the Board of Education to speed things up. Because what's going to happen? We don't have an engineer, or we have an engineer and I'm not too sure, but if it was at the Board of Education's disposal, they could do whatever they want and put their money because I'm sure that that $300,000 is not going to be sufficient, no way, once they talk with drainage. I don't know why we're getting involved, but if we got the grant, fine. I would make a motion or let the majority make a motion to send that grant entirely at the disposal of the Board of Education to do whatever they want for that field. If we don't do that, and I'm telling you what's going to happen, the $300,000 is not enough. I've got some letters here from an engineer that gave ballpark figures that exceeds that number now. So that means I can't do it. And then I got to talk to the Board of what we can and what we can't do. But if we gave that grant entirely to the Board of Education and let them spend it and let them talk to their engineer and let them say, "Oh, it's going to cost 400, yeah, we'll put the extra money." I don't care what they do. That's the only way that thing is going to be done properly. If we do it and they do it, it's not going to happen. But I'm in favor of it, no matter what they do, but it's best for everybody concerned that that money be transferred right to the Board of Education or just let them do it and we'll pay up to whatever that grant is.
Okay, if I could just make a comment. Right now, we do have an engineer assigned to that ball field and he drew up specs for drainage and the baseball field. Those plans now are in the engineer's hands for the Board of Ed. So as soon as we get approval from that engineer, we can...
Have you got an estimate what he gave as a ballpark figure for that engineer?
Yeah, we have an estimate, it's with us.
It's in the budget, I think it's 430,000.
I'm sorry?
I think it's 430,000.
I think it's more closer to 3 and...
All right, I'm not going to argue, but that's where we're going to go. It's going to exceed it and this is without even bids being sent out.
Okay. I was at the Board, well, I was at the Board of Education meeting last night and I asked them what the plans included and they said, "It's a town project and I should be coming here to find out because it was through the town engineer."
So you're confused and we're confused.
So possibly the two should work together and maybe if there is enough, it would be appreciated by all the students and the parents.
I think to answer her question, Joe, Mr. Settcase. And I'd like to know myself, is there lights included? And I didn't get a... There's no lights included. We have a total of maybe $300,000 in grants and what we thought was, since we don't have any property of our own, we could help out the schools like we've done in the past. So the baseball field, as you see, it hasn't been worked on in 20-plus years. So we said, "You know what? Let's give it to the Board of Ed, let's put a new baseball field there, but if you're going to do a baseball field, it's going to need drainage." So that's included in that. Lighting has never been mentioned. I'm not quite sure what that cost would be. That would be more of the Board of Ed having to approve something like that, the lighting end of it. They've already said they're comfortable accepting the grant money for a baseball field, but no lighting has been mentioned.
Okay, well then I can address it back to them when they get the plans back. And the second issue, and I don't like to take up a lot of your time, but a lot of us in the long school area are very, very concerned and there may not be as many parents here tonight because I'm already late for a PTA meeting, but we're very concerned about what's being done in town with these apartments, that the project that's being talked about and the project that's going to court. We're very concerned. You're talking in an area of a town, of our town, that we've got a smaller school, it's landlocked, there's a lot of children in that area and we have extremely big concerns about a school referendum that we fought extremely hard to get through and that school referendum, the improvements to the school, isn't going to support what's going to be forced on us. It's not going to support it and it's not going to support it in any of the other schools, but they at least have a little bit more land to go out on if we had to put even portables out there. None of the issues that we fought so hard for on the referendum will cover what we're talking about in increases here. You're talking 600 units, I'm talking 600 kids. And if anybody tells me that's a potential, yes, I know, it could be lots less, but if you put in 128 or 126, whatever Mount Laurel units, you have at least 128 kids. That's low and moderate income. Where are the lower moderate income people going to live? In single bedroom apartments. Sometimes not only one child, two children. And that can be just, you can look at that, you can do the demographics. It was brought up at the board meeting last night about the demographics and it was confirmed the school referendum would never support those kind because it wasn't even looked at at that time when they did the demographics for the school referendum. So we're very concerned that we fought so hard for 25 years, we're going to be paying for something that's not going to support what's going to be thrown on us, which is, comes to be legalized blackmail. This man comes in, says, "I want to put in this much stuff" and town says, "No, we can't support it." Well, Mount Laurel, I'm going to do it. Well, you know what? Somebody better go and get all these studies done because we also have traffic concerns in that area. You cannot make a left-hand turn onto South Midlan Ave from Floral Lane, Hayes, Sheppis, Wilson, any of them. You have a sea of brown going down that street from 8:00 in the morning until probably almost 9:30, 10:00. Then you have it going the other way, come back, our neighbors in Fair Lawn have asked you to look at and do whatever you can to stop because they're concerned about it. That Floral Lane is a through street, it is a trucking street. Any trucks can come down Floral Lane. We've been told that before. Our school is on Floral Lane. The safety of our children going to school can be compromised with all that additional What about the services in this town? I've already discussed, schools can't be supported. What about the sewers? The water? The police? Will we need to hire any more police? We've got a whole lot more people. We're going to need more police? These are all these issues that are bothering all our parents. I can't come as a PTA delegate and tell you the PTA says. I can tell you that every person in my PTA as a parent is concerned about this and because they've seen me talk here before and I've been talking for the school referendum, I've been voted as, "Okay, we have a PTA meeting, you go and then come back and tell us what happened." So it really is something that if you can fight hard, fight hard. Fight for all of it because I see it as, "Oh, you don't want to give me what I want? I'll claim Mount Laurel." That's blackmail. In any other terms of it, it's just legalized blackmail. On August 18th, there was an editorial in the newspaper and the Record where James McGreevy, the governor... McGreevy, the governor, he spoke more than, like the mayor he used to be than the chief state executive he had become, and he says, in quote, "In many cases, the developer literally institutes litigation to coerce a municipality to accept wrong, ill-suited development. After he ravages the municipality, he then develops a moral purpose, is imbued by the Holy Spirit, and argues that affordable housing is needed." Since nineteen eighty, fewer than thirty thousand affordable housing units have been built as a result of litigation. More than likely, a compromise is met, where they say, "Okay, you can't do this, we'll do compromise, we won't go through the courts, we'll do a compromise." And you end up with, he gets four hundred units, zero are Mount Laurel, and he's lining his pockets. So what did he do? He forced you to compromise. He forced you to get him what he wanted in the first place. He probably only wanted to build four hundred profitable units. But instead, he has to propose something extreme to make you say, "We'll compromise." It's happened in other municipalities, it's happened, if you keep looking, you can find them. If we have to, we, it says here, "You can go, you can seek mediation and review by the council on affordable housing." But half of all non-urban municipalities have done so. Because either they don't know what's out there, or their legal representation is not aware that they can do that. If you have any way to fight this, and I know there's court on September twenty-third, I do believe that you need to put down as hard as you can to fight for this, because I'm watching houses by houses go up for sale on Shepeth and Wilson. Close you get to Midland Ave, they're going up for sale. And I heard last night, someone said at the Board of Education meeting, "If this goes through, there'll be a for sale sign on my house."
If this council and mayor sticks together, they will not win. Let me tell you right now, they will not win if this mayor and council stick together.
Well, I'm just here with the urging of my co-parents at the Long School area, and I'm sure other school areas, to please fight your hardest and do what's best for the whole town. It has nothing to do with personalities, it has nothing to do with politics. It has, the whole demographics of this town can be altered if this is forced upon the town. And I'm gonna apologize for not being able to stay longer and hear anything else. I do have to go to a PTA meeting, but I am gonna give you these copies of that editorial that was written on August eighteenth in the Record.
Through the chair? Nancy, as you know, I was at that Board of Education meeting yesterday, and I feel that we need to keep the Board of Education educated in what we do, because what we do affects what's gonna happen in the school system. And I think yesterday, Mr. Grobman confirmed that the people he has worked with over the course of time in the demographics will say that there will be six hundred, an influx of six hundred, if not plus, students into the school system, which will have a tremendous impact. That's why I attended the meeting, and you can rest assured that we now are in the process of advising our attorneys to fight tooth and nail to get the density. We have always been, or the majority of us have been, against the density, the number of units that are coming into this community. And I've been fighting it ever since, as of recent, as today. The closed session we had was to discuss that specific issue. So we are now taking the position, a hard-line position, to fight the number of units that are gonna come into this community.
You do have the town's support, and you have the people's support. They may not always get up here, but you do have their support. So if you just keep them involved in it, and you keep them aware of what's going on, and keep the articles out there, you will keep getting the support, and the PTAs will be talking this up.
We appreciate your coming up here, Nancy.
Nancy, if I may say also, we just had a meeting here this evening with our town planner, and I had met, I had taken one of the planning board members with me to Mr. Corker's office about ten days ago, because after some discussion with the planning board member, myself, we found out that there could be potentially an error in the numerical computation that was originally down at COA many years ago. Now, even though it says that since we're in litigation, we are not allowed to go back to COA, we are going to go the extra steps. We are going back to COA in a different way to see if we can get that number that's been remanded to the township reduced. That gets reduced, density gets reduced, that's priority. And additionally so, we're sending copies of those letters that the planner is sending to COA to the judge in hopes that he and the master consider it. I'm opposed against apartments, particularly, we have a beautiful setup on Sampson Street. I'm opposed to the three, four stories. I sit on the planning board, and if this should come before that planning board, and the council has the opportunity to adopt the ordinance, it has to be the right ordinance, the right zoning in the right places for this town, and the right number. I think I could safely sit here and say, "I, as mayor, oppose this, I will fight my hardest, as well as every council member, and our attorneys, and all our professionals." And we will continue to communicate, as Lou had said.
We will appreciate everything you can do for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Good evening. John Gedrowitz, Colonial Lay of New. I have to draw you a little picture. I'm here to explain something, no personalities or politics again, and I'll talk through the chair. Well, you all are aware that we have a full-time senior citizen bus driver and a part-time bus driver, that's me, part-time bus driver, fill-in, here, there, whenever. I have a problem. It bothers me a little bit. I got involved with the seniors, I enjoy it very much. I was hired, interviewed and hired by our mayor, and to cover for the regular driver while he was recuperating from heart surgery. And after a while, I got very comfortable with the seniors on the bus and at the center. A lot of them spoke to me, but that's not why I'm here. The reason I'm here is, after I was hired, I saw that there was a lot of extra available time during the days. And I took it upon myself, the mayor said to use common sense when I was driving the bus. And I tried to, and I did the best I could. I had a schedule, printed schedule, and I'll tell you, just to make a picture. Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, doctors' visits. Afternoon, pick-up for bingo. Thursday, food shopping, AMP. Friday, the mall. And bingo in the afternoon. Okay? As I got to know the seniors on the bus, I was approached by a few of them at different days. "Could you drop me off at the library?" I said, "Sure, it fits into the schedule, I have time." "How long you gonna be there?" "Half hour." "Okay." On the way back, I'm passing the library anyway, "Pick you up, take you home." Another day, somebody wanted to stop off the bank, cash their social security check. "Sure, it fits in." Dropped off at five minutes, and this went on three or four times. I get a call on the bus one day from the secretary, or whatever you wanna call the girl that works at the center, sort of runs the center, makes the scheduling and everything. And she says, "Could you come in? The director wants to see you." Okay, now, the director of the center. I walk in there, and he says to me, "I'm the boss here, I'm the director. Anything you do goes through me. Don't you forget it. Did you take these people to the hairdresser, to the library, to the whatever?" I said, "Yes, I did." He says, "Why?" I said, "Why not? I had the time." He said, "You don't do anything other than as on that schedule." I was told by the mayor that anything, she was in charge. I go to the mayor and I explain this to her, and she says, "You're doing all right." I said, "Okay." I go back, and now he starts to harass me. He's the boss, I can't do anything without him. Now he's ordering me to do odd jobs at the center. Doesn't hurt me, I was doing them anyway. I enjoyed it. Okay. Somewhere along the line, the mayor appointed me to the advisory board, senior advisory board. And I made the meetings. And one day, I was sitting on my couch, and it just, red light came on, and I, I said, "Jeez, the director said I shouldn't do these things, and my hours are from eight in the morning till three-thirty, with a half hour for lunch." And he said, "I'm ruining the job by doing these extra things." Now what? I thought about it, and thought about it. Now I'm a retired police officer, and I go back to the police mentality, and I start thinking about this. So at the next advisory board meeting, I bring it up to the mayor, and I said, "There's something wrong here." And I'm, now, I'm not accusing anybody, I'm not pointing fingers at anybody, I don't want to get you the wrong idea. I brought it up to the mayor, and I said, "Something doesn't guy, something's not right." She said, "What?" And I explained it. And she said, "If you're right, this should be legal. If the man is getting paid thirty-five hours, and I know, I'm experienced now, I've been driving the bus, and only working approximately twenty hours, and I was getting paid ten dollars an hour, that's a lot of money. It's like four hundred dollars a week? I mean, a month, five thousand dollars a year? Could go to the seniors, or, I have nothing against a man working forty, eighty hours, if he, you know, gives a day's work. I take pride in my work. My job performance talks for me, I don't have to say it." The mayor said she would check into it. Shortly afterwards, I go to a, I stopped at her shop a few times, but I know she's busy, I agree, I was in business too. I left messages, never, never heard anything, I wanted to know. I drive, what hours do I put into it? What am I supposed to do? I never got her, and I didn't pursue it. I was a little upset. Anyway, shortly after that, I was, I went to an advisory board meeting, and someone said, "Oh, haven't seen you in a while, what are you doing here?" "It's a meeting." "Didn't you know you're not on the advisory board anymore? The mayor took you off." "Did he tell you?" "What, tell me now." "Okay, all right." Gee. And then, a red light again. "I stepped on somebody's foot?" "I must have." Well, I never did get an answer on it. And that's one reason I'm here, to maybe get an answer tonight. Why, I mean, if the mayor through the chair did investigate this, and if anything was done.
Thank you. First, I'd like to address the investigation. However, I did do an investigation, and it happens to deal with personnel, which we cannot discuss at a meeting. The investigation went forward, and I could got, I could not get anyone to come forward to make a statement publicly that would warrant termination on any employee, and we're just talking in general here this evening. Secondly, I'd like to know, did you get a letter in writing from me dismissing you from the advisory board? Then I never, I never asked for your dismissal, John. And as you said, when you came in as driver, I hired you, I interviewed you, we were able to connect, whether it be at the store or at the advisory board meeting, you and I always had the same thought in mind, benefits services to the Saddlebrook seniors. You know how hard I fought with the former director, who is now deceased, that I was the mayor, along with you, who was our new part-time driver and had a wonderful rapport with the seniors, that the women were able to go to the beauty parlor, trips were made to vets for their animals, banking, any accommodation, you and I worked very well together. So at this point in time, I do take offense somewhat that you're saying that I dismissed you, when there, you will never find a letter of dismissal. And whoever told you that, certainly if you could not speak to me at my place of business. Mr. Lodeco was here five, six, seven days a week as administrator, Gloria Cinski, my secretary, I never did receive any messages from this town hall directed to me from you, because you've known me long enough in your capacity, and you know where I was with the senior center, and where I still am, and I still believe in your beliefs.
I questioned someone at town hall, Municipal Building, and they did say I was no longer on the committee.
Well, you know, I find in Saddlebrook...
Now, I'm not accusing anyone, I said that in the beginning, and I'm not pointing, I was in business, you're in business, there's other people here probably in business. Now, if an employee came up to me and said, "Joe is not working up to standards," I would sure investigate it. Now, I know, I don't have anything with me right now, but since that director that's deceased told me that my hours had to be from eight to three-thirty, and I could accomplish without problems the work involved in twenty hours, something is not right, okay? Now, I have evidence at home that there are days that that bus is in service without being used. And I'd like to ask the attorney, that, are the records, are the pay records available to the town council and me?
Right to know, sure.
Yes, absolutely.
Well, I'd like to ask...
There's a protocol, now, uh...
Excuse me?
There is a protocol that's been recently adopted by the state legislature for the request and receipt of those documents. You'd have to fill out the appropriate form with the custodian of the record, who is Mr. Lodeco, but so long as that form and that protocol is adhered to, the answer is yes, they're public documents.
I wanna make something personally, perfectly clear here. I'm not here, and I never did ask, for that person, the other driver, to be fired or to be harassed. All I asked was, something is not right. It doesn't weigh, not close. Believe me, before we implemented the extracurricular deliveries, I mean, the seniors' deliveries, whatever you wanna call them...
Services.
You understand what I'm saying?
Services.
There were only the schedule. Doctors, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. Bingo in the afternoon. Food shopping on Thursday, which was done at noon. Thursday, the mall, that was done at noon. Bingo on Friday, and that was it. And I asked a couple times for council, somebody on the council, to ride with me for a week, because I don't think it's fair. I'm a taxpayer, okay? And a senior citizen. And I don't think it's fair, a person, and I'm not saying it's true, I didn't see the pay records yet, but if it's true, what the director told me, thirty-five hours a week, and the job can be done in twenty, okay? I would be on my employees real quick. And I think every one of you would. And I think every one of you would, if you were in business, and you are in business, some of you. That's my question. Someone brought up to me, because I discussed it with someone, that the mayor took you off the committee, and you don't, you shouldn't go up there and say what you have to say, because you might lose the bus driving job.
John, I'm, I'm.
I don't make that much on the bus driving job. I enjoy spoiling the women.
And he's good at it, he's very good at it.
And I want to say something else. I said it a hundred times already. If we live long enough, we, every one of us might need that bus. And damn it, take care of that bus. Take care of the seniors now, because there's more that can be done for them. There is a lot more that can be done for them. There's a lot of them in this town that cannot get out of the house, except for that bus. And it bothers me, there's more to it than I'm telling you tonight, and I say this, I say it to every councilman here, the mayor too, I will meet with anyone, not one person, I will meet with council members anytime I wish you would call me, and I sit down with you and tell you what I've learned from the seniors that believe in me, and a lot of them do, and they tell me everything. I'm not here to cause problems, I'm here to help the seniors, and the job only gives me satisfaction to do it right, not money. That's all I have to say.
John, if I may, you were never removed from the board, you should never feel threatened by your position. How could, how could you, if you hear second information, you must come to the source. I have never submitted a letter, never had any thought in mind to do that. You brought a great service to the Saddlebrook Senior Center. I'm working with the county regarding some transportation, additional transportation efforts for Saddlebrook, and believe it or not, because of the combined efforts in this community, where your suggestions came in, where I wanted to see it go, Saddlebrook within 70 communities in this town is going to become a pilot program for the services we do offer. So we have a lot to be proud of here. You cannot undermine the trips and the availability of the bus, and the expanded services that I as mayor have instituted and created, because as you said earlier, you had a former director who would not, and I came along as mayor, and I said, I'm sorry, but this, there is a need here, and we will fulfill a need. And my suggestion is, I would very much, before you leave here this evening, like to make an appointment with you for one day next week in the town hall, to sit, review the records, whatever is on your mind, open up any books you would like opened, and discuss it, and to your satisfaction, sir.
Well, like I said before, I won't sit with one person.
Now, I said, in the town hall, where we will be sitting, whether it be with our payroll clerk, whether it be with our administrator, another council member, whoever would wish to join us.
I would like council members present at a meeting.
We have council members that are here, available in the day.
Hear the real facts.
We can select two.
Whoever is, like to know about it, whoever is interested, you know, and I'm sure you all are, because you're all going to be 65 and 80 someday. I say we can't rest on our laurels.
I passed it already, John. And so did Eddie.
No, no, 64. 64.
Thank you for your time, patients.
I would like to offer you an appointment right now, for your schedule for next week, please, before you leave, so that this is being brought to my attention, and we're taking about care of it immediately. And if you just give me one moment, please. Well, the Saddlebrook, are you going to the senior picnic at Vansawn on Wednesday, Thursday?
Excuse me, repeat that, please.
Okay, let me give you two dates. The 17th, which is Tuesday, we can meet at 2:00 PM here at town hall.
That sounds good to me.
Okay, fine.
Who else will be here?
Who's the senior advisor?
I think you ought to send a memo to all the council members to a meeting at such a date.
2:00 PM, but we're going to have to have, do we need to advertise through the chair?
Well, if you're going to have a majority of the members of the council, if you're going to have three members, yes, you're going to have them advertise.
What time would this meeting be, in the afternoon?
Yeah, 2:00.
2:00. Who's available?
I have Karen.
John and Flo? Okay.
And I may be available.
Then I think a resolution could be presented during the regular fire risk meeting, authorizing the entire council to meet at a such a date, at such a place that will cover sunshine.
I think correct.
I'm thinking you just throw something else like that, what?
Would you please?
I'll second that.
Go in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Make me a motion, I thought. It's a closed session. Anybody else?
You did say 2:00 on Tuesday.
The 17th, yes. Thank you.
Nobody else.
Victor?
I could go on, you don't have to tell me. Be short.
Okay. I wasn't going to say a word, Victor.
Oh, I know you was.
Okay, okay, I'm Victor Carver, 590 Hickory Avenue. I got a couple important things to bring up tonight, but before I do, I'd like to straighten out a point. Last meeting, I was accused of finger pointing, and I would like to put into proper context the meaning of finger pointing. If you, the council, individually or collectively, through acts, negligent acts of omission or commission, caused financial damage to we, the people, and then you start blaming each other, or blaming somebody else, in an effort to cover your political rear end, that's finger pointing. That is finger pointing. When we, the people, express our displeasure at your actions, we, the people, happen to be your boss, you work for us. So when we, the people, come over here and point your faults, we are not finger pointing. We are exercising our right as your boss to bring you on the carpet. The main purpose of your blaming each other and finger pointing is one, to cover your political rear end. The purpose of mine coming over here and pointing to your faults is a lofty one, to have a salutary effect on the way you conduct our business. See? So there's a big difference between one and the other. All right. Now, I was in Trenton today, and I found out that the assessed valuation of this township That's what this township, all the property and land and everything else is worth, all right? According to state law, according to state regulations, the township, all townships, are allowed to borrow up to 3.5% of the assessed valuation. All right? By my figures, that means that you could borrow up to $43 million, that's what, all right? Right now, according to the records, again, we have a debt of $7,45,202. But that is the principal. When you add the interest to that, that amounts actually to about $13 million, not just $7 million, or $8 million, all right? So we actually owe about $30 million. But don't start jumping with joy, because there's something else that I found out. You see, these figures don't include the debt of the Board of Education.
And the county.
Okay? And the Board of Education happens to have a debt of $22 million, all right? And if you add the $30 million that we are in debt over here, now we owe up to $35 million in debt. That's pushing pretty close to the $43 million that we are now, isn't it? Very close. And when you consider the consequences of the fiascos of Oval and senior citizen, or senior housing, we'd probably be adding another $7 million to that. It's going to cost easily $7 million to just get the infrastructure and everything else in place. So then, we are really pushing to the $43 million, aren't we? So it seems to me that we better start doing something about it now. We better start tightening our belts now. That's an old lady saying that there are three ways of doing things.
Victor, could you hold up a second, please?